Welcome to the February 5 Harris County Board of Commissioners meeting. Glad to see all of you here. We open within vocation, so if you please bow over to you. Our dear government father, we're so thankful for the blessings that we have received. We're thankful for the blessings we received yesterday, Lord, today, and those that we will receive tomorrow. We thank you, Lord, for those peace officers who keep us safe. We thank you for our military who ensure our freedoms and ensure our safety and security in this country. Lord, we pray that you will give us the wisdom to make the right decisions for the residents of this county. And, Lord, that we will have the best interest of all our citizens at heart when we make our decisions. Lord, we thank you again for each and everything that you have given us, every blessing. In Jesus' name, one, two, three. Amen. Commissioner Brown, from now on, will you best be pleased with me?
Lord, y'all join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have kind of a link to your agenda tonight, so we'll try to get you out of here and not keep you too out of the line. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for regular session of January 15. All right, all those in favor? And the comprehensive plan update work session of January 15. I wrote all of those down.
Not opposed to vote.
Okay, all right. All right, is there a prayer for citizens? Under all business, we have appointments for reporters, boards, and committees.
I would like to appoint Patrick Callaway to the Public Improvement Authority for one of those spots we have. Jason Johnson goes up the list, says he moved.
And I would like to recommend Andrew Zerner from Martha Chume's. Anyone else have any other appointments?
Nancy, do we have the recommendation from the Catala Board for Joe Valdez for Catala for the Red Board?
Yes.
Is that gathering?
Yes.
I'd like to make that also a recommendation that we accept Joe Valdez onto the Red Board in the place of Jeff Allen.
Okay, anyone else for any others? Here in none, is there a motion to accept all three of these?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Motion. I won't put these on the topic on the agenda again until someone tells me they have something ready to go on the session.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Melody Lakes Dam options. And just as background for someone who may not know, this project was last discussed during our January 15, 2019 meeting. The action was taken to approve moving forward with the GMA grant application, but action regarding choosing an option was taken to this meeting. The project is contained in the approved budget, seventy-five thousand dollars for consulting, three hundred fifty thousand for actual construction, or a total of four hundred twenty-five thousand. The project will span at least two fiscal years, and any cost of four hundred twenty-five thousand could be included in general funds spread over two or three fiscal years. A GFA, low-interest loan spread over several years, or the possibility of a GMA grant for which the deadline is March the first. Once an option has been selected, the state will be notified, and the consulting engineers can begin the design work. On completion of the design, the project will be bid out and awarded to the most responsive bidder. The entire process of design permitting, bidding, and award could take about eight months, and the construction will start around October of 2019, be completed during December of 2020. Brian Kimsey and Beth Smith, our consulting engineers, are here tonight to review the project and answer any questions that the board may have. Okay, gentlemen, I think you have option eight.
We do.
On the table.
So the last meeting, we talked about the potential of reclassifying this as a category two dam. And in order to do that, we made some estimates on what would require, what would need to happen for that to be allowed by Safe Dams. So after meeting, we, when it was tabled, we discussed adding an additional option, option eight, as this, to title it lower the dam to reclassify as a category two. That's the option we're talking about. When we first say that this is very, 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 very preliminary, you know, engineering work has not been done, there's a lot of things that has to take place before we can know for certain. This is an educated guess based on the other projects that we've had. We feel like that somewhere around three feet, lowering the dam three feet and lowering the waterline three feet will eliminate the potential for flooding, the downstream hazards. Now, those hazards have to be surveyed, we have to get finished soil elevations, we have to get lowest adjacent grades of those houses in the pool area of Ski Lake in order to confirm that, and then the model will be run based on that. I do have a map that shows, just so you can get an idea, everyone can see the light blue line all the way around. That is what we think that the new pool elevation would be if we lowered this dam three feet. As you can tell, we talked about this last meeting, but it's pretty steep in the sides, and you don't have a great deal of impact, but up in the upper ends, you do see a little bit of loss of cool area. So our pool area goes from sixteen point four acres to thirteen point five acres. We're losing roughly three acres. We do have a parcel, someone suggested adding parcels to this as well, it's on the county website, people have the parcels around this, you said he was, I can't be, people are impacting the parcels. But in a nutshell, that's really what we've come up with. We go out, the cost will still be around the four hundred thousand mark. And the reason that is, is because you can't, Safe Dam will not allow us just to lower the dam. They still have other maintenance issues that have been known for a while. Everything, the dam might be stabilized before they will sign off and say it's a category two. So we're lowering the dam, we're doing all maintenance items, the normal maintenance items, installing a new principal spillway, which more than likely would be cycling system. We think that'll work fine, whether it's two pipes or three pipes, we don't know yet, we have a ton of numbers, but it'll be some form of cycling system. And then, once completed and signed off by the engineer of record, Safe Dams will then reclassify as a category two. So that eliminates the requirements from inspections quarterly, any additional items of maintenance, it's just, you would be required to do normal maintenance, but it wouldn't be required by Safe Dams to do that. Category two designation still means that if someone builds down below in the breach zone after this is completed, it could go back to category one dam. So that's one thing that commissioners need to know. If someone built downstream, you know, we lower the dam down to remove the current hazards, someone can still build downstream below it inside the breach zone, and they can reclassify it as a category one.
Even though there are currently residences below it?
Right, so let's say a residence has put lower elevation, so we designed this for a certain elevation, and they come in, and we show them those residents that are there now are out of the breach zone, and somebody comes below that elevation and builds a house, then it could be reclassified as a category one.
Do these calls include putting the road back?
Yes.
I have a question. Y'all brought us six options. If this is such a good and vital option, why was this not an option brought whatsoever?
We did discuss that, but there's additional costs that we don't know. We still don't know for certain if this will work. There may be a house that we're missing.
So there has to be a study?
There has to be a study.
With additional costs?
That's right.
Prior to even knowing if this is a viable?
That's correct.
How long will that study take?
We were just discussing that, the survey, we're probably a month out from the survey, we can give them the notice to proceed today. They'll have to serve, they'll have to do a total tracking survey of Ski Lake dam, the whole dam, and then what we're trying to do is prevent this from overtopping Ski Lake, the dam, and so Ski Lake will contain the breach of Melody Lakes. So all the houses within that pool area of Ski Lake will need to be, will need to finish, get finished soil elevations of those. And then the analysis part, which we've done some preliminary analysis, not, we don't have the data, we need to do a formal analysis, not some preliminary analysis, but it'll take another couple of weeks. So you're probably six to eight weeks before you know for sure.
So we missed the launch first deadline to the grant application?
Well, I think we're gonna apply for that anyway. The thought would be to submit an application for that. If you decided to move forward with this, we would maybe set, give ourselves some cushion on that amount, we can always back it down, but we would go ahead and submit the GMA application to make sure we don't miss that deadline. It's easy enough to just load this plan, once we submit the GMA application, we just don't need to miss this deadline.
How much assurance do you have that by doing, if you remember eight, that the state will allow you to, or will, the state will reclassify this dam as a category two?
We got several that we've done this very first same thing with, and so as long as we can prove that there's, the hazards are removed, there's no reason why they would not reclassify it.
One thing the state's been upset about is the fact that they don't have a plan.
That's correct.
If you adopt this particular option, and would that satisfy the state temporarily at least that you do in fact have a plan?
Yes.
And that is the key, is it to have, with Plan One or Plan Eight, is to have a plan that's worth the state's concern about?
Yeah, what they, they want to be moving in the right direction, and so this is moving in some direction.
Wants to do something.
Right, and so the, what we would have to do is submit the breach study to them. We'll meet with them, we call a pre-design meeting, and we'll discuss what our methods are, what we're talking about doing to the dam, and then we would submit the whole package, redesign of the lower dam and the breach study, and let them make the final determination. But we'll have a good handle on that before we do additional work on the dam design. So the key is the breach study. We did the formal breach study with the survey information, that's the key. And then we meet with Safe Dams, but that is, you're right, that's moving in a direction.
Is there any assurance that options one through seven, the state would put a rubber stamp on the Safe Dam, go ahead, or we may have to go through the same process that they would go through in looking at option eight?
I must run by all your questions.
Meaning that you've got seven options, and if you pick one of those seven options, and say this is what we're gonna do, we got, compared to the definition of cost, and you go in and you took that to them, that's, would they go through the same process that they would go through in reviewing what you were taking on number eight? Or would they just say, oh, that looks great, here, go back to business?
It's slightly different. You still have to have a pre-design meeting, whatever option is chosen. All of these options meet their criteria, that's the point of this, so you guys can choose which one you want to move forward with. So all of them, we have very good assurance that any of those eight options would be selected, or that could be approved by them.
So in our last meeting, you said that the lake of pool could be lowered as much as eight feet, ten feet, you didn't know. And tonight, you're saying that through your preliminary work, you think it's three?
That's right.
So if the study is done, you will bring the study back to us for us to see if it actually is three, or if it's eight?
Absolutely.
Before moving forward with the final?
Yeah, the reason we didn't know, we had not, once we were, we moved away from that option, because you were gonna have to spend money on it, not knowing that it was gonna work. Once we looked at the downstream, the potential for Ski Lake to hold back a certain amount of water, we felt pretty confident that this, that three feet would work.
I know that every situation is different, every lake is different, every dam is different. But you said y'all have a number eight, option number eight, you've done that before.
Yes.
And you've seen success with that.
Changing a lake from category, I mean, a dam from category one to category?
It's all about what you can, you know, Safe Dams is, they're, they're, they're public, and so if there's potential for loss of life downstream, that's why it's category one. They haven't done these studies, they haven't done these detailed studies to know whether or not it is or isn't. They look at it, they say reasonably, if this dam were to breach, there's potential loss of life. And so this would prove and give them validation that there's no hazard, provided the elevations work out that way.
But it definitely can be dropped to a category two, it's just a matter of how far we have to drop the dam and the water level, correct?
That's correct. And even in some cases, if it lowers it below their criteria of a hundred acre feet or the twenty-five feet tall, it could be declassified completely.
So that being?
So Safe Dams, their definition of a dam is anything that's twenty-five feet tall or impounds more than a hundred acre feet of water. So if we've had instances where we completely declassified, it's not deregulated, it's not regulated dam anymore, by proving that you can lower it to a certain level, that there's no loss of life, and it's below the criteria that makes it considered a dam. And in that case, instead of going from category one, category two, it would be unregulated and not considered a dam.
That's right.
So for a category two, would we still have to do some inspections on the dam?
No inspections are required for category two. They will inspect every so often, five or six years, they'll come back and just confirm the hazards listed, you know, there's no, you know, wanted to build a new house, that's how they do with all category two dams now, they'll periodically inspect those to verify that there's no hazards.
That's right. So we'd have to have a permanent moratorium and we'll get them to report that aid?
I would treat it kind of like a floodplain, a river floodplain, you know, you note those, and this could be recorded, you know, it could be recorded, documented. The breach zone could be recorded.
You want to have any other question? Randy, correct me if I'm wrong, we have another inspection coming up down there.
Yes, I think, Mike, probably, when you're gonna have the inspection there, it's gonna be March or May?
The twenty-fifth, where you're gonna be March.
March thirteenth.
March thirteenth.
But will they come and do an inspection once we make a selection, will they come to an inspection? Probably not.
This is irrelevant, this inspection is irrelevant to this discussion.
It is, it's totally wrong.
He said it's a standard, normal inspection that they perform every couple of years.
Mike, is that, is that what your understanding is?
No, he told me that if the decision is made and we're moving forward with a plan, that they may like the, but he's gonna need proof that we're moving forward more than we have.
So basically, once the board makes a decision, then we're gonna communicate with the inspectors to say, do you want to come down here or not? It'll be up to them to come down or not. So right now, it's undetermined.
That's good.
Any other discussion of questions? Ryan, man? Thank you. Okay, and yes, the next question needs to ask, is there a motion?
I would make a motion to proceed with option number eight, and also to proceed with that paperwork, gentlemen.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
So does your motion include doing the thirty thousand dollar study?
Yes.
And bringing back the results to us prior to moving ahead with the option?
Yes, had to check exactly how many feet the dam water level would need to be dropped. Yes, I couldn't review that first, review that, save the stage now.
Any other questions?
So the motion then is really a conditional motion depending on the report from the study and the option, or we then can go again?
Yeah, the motion is made and move forward with the study.
Yeah, that's really what the option is, is to do the study.
To do the study.
And it'll be six to eight weeks?
It needs to start later, that's the key.
We can, we can reply for the grant.
When could you start on the survey?
I'll contact two surveyors tomorrow, the one that performed the previous survey was a local surveyor, I'll get him, and then another one, five, we can get to quicker, get pricing and schedules for both of them, but I'll contact them tomorrow, or as soon as Brian can give me the list of what all of you need surveyed, I'll send it to him. But I would imagine they're both have work going on right now, so they need a couple of weeks before they can get to it.
So logistically, okay, so we pursue with option eight, do the study, come back in six or eight weeks. In the meantime, we're gonna do the GMA grant, submit that by March first, and then if the study, what if the study is not favorable? What's our fallback position? Then we're back to square one.
You're right, going one through seven.
Okay, and the GMA application is now coming out?
GMA application?
And we can't amend it, couldn't we?
I think so.
We might could amend it.
I think so.
So what are you gonna put in that application? Put this option without our, having voted on moving forward with that option? That's what's concerning me.
That way it's reliable and so forth. We'd have to put in an option with a price, a cost element. And I think an option is to go, put the more expensive options, I think we discussed last time, than option three, and be able to back down from that if option eight was favorable.
Don't we have to sign that we approved that option of this board? Any option, when you send the grant application in, I would think that the chairman at least would have to sign that that's the option we'd agree on.
It has to be, it does have to be, I think there is a signature spot for the chairman, someone to sign on the commissioner's behalf, but it can be adjusted, amended, matter of fact, I just don't know this way you prefer to, I'm afraid if we wait, that March first deadline will come and go, and we will not have that as an option, which?
We need that as an option.
GFA is the other option, which alone only, but I hate to pass up this one.
They didn't tell you anything but no.
Sir?
Said they can't tell you anything but no.
Right, and for sending five percent grant, I would submit it just to see, make sure they tell us no, but.
Do you recall what the signatory statement is?
I'd have to look back and see.
Is it online, can you look it up? To see if it says we approved this option, or does it just say we approved you submitting the grant? Remember when our chairman walked up and decided?
Oh, Matt's looking for that, basically, logistically, the survey, I mean, the survey we're doing, either come back in six or eight weeks, come back no, or no, or no. If it's a go, but then we don't have enough information to submit the grant. But if it's a go, then we proceed all of option eight. If it's a no-go, then we're back to square one to pick option one through seven.
But if we submit that we're doing option eight, which is the least expensive option, and then we don't, we're not able to do that, then we missed our opportunity on the expensive grant. If we submit option three, and then we try to amend dam, I doubt that they would, plus it doesn't mean.
It's not committing down, of course.
They're not gonna allow us to amend up, because they will have allocated that whole pot of money.
Correct, and, but now the GMA, once the grant is submitted, it'll take a very long time to get a response. This is essentially a pre-application. They submit the pre-application, they go through answer, ask questions, getting more details they need to do the full application, they make recommendations to FEMA. GMA goes through, scores them, consolidates it to an application that goes to FEMA for the federal money. So this is a pre-application, that's the process that takes so long, is that goes to GMA, then it goes to FEMA, and then comes back around.
And that could take how many months?
I believe the last round we had took almost a year.
A year, to get an answer of, to get an answer?
Anything else?
I don't know what we need to have, option thirty-eight. Start with option three, and if we have to, then we can go down to eight. Of course, that doesn't work.
Well, it could work. We could approve option three pending the results of the study. Apply for the GMA grant with option three. And then when the study comes back, we could probably, most likely amend the grant down. Now, I don't know, I've just written a lot of grants, and they'll, how they usually work, we can amend down, and I'm gonna amend up.
And I've got the application. All it's asking for is an authorized applicant agent, an individual authorized to have signed financial and legal documents on behalf of the local government, chairperson, board of county commissioners, or the county manager. They ask for your signature, and it says this worksheet is for all hazard mitigation assistance programs for drainage improvement proposals, list all sections, provide the required documents. It doesn't obligate, in the language on here, there is no obligation to move forward with this or, or the distributive changes. It's asking for product information, and that you're agreeing to it, but there is no commitment beyond that that I can see.
Well, it's seven thirty.
Once you go in, if you go and take a look now, if everybody's ready, if they're not?
Is everybody ready?
Well, let me just say one question. So, you're going to apply for the grant for the cost of three?
That would...
And the description in the grant will be three?
Yes, ma'am. If that's what the commissioners are... Okay, well, that would be...
Well, then we might decide seven. I was just asking as to what his grant... And I would think we would have to approve option three.
And that's all that's...
All right, everybody's in agreement? All right, um, you now have three public hearings that are scheduled. You would go out your confidence in interest forms, please, and pass those down. Nancy? Okay, the procedures on our public hearings are as follows. Public hearing, read the application. The applicant then has the opportunity to come forward and explain their application. And those who are in favor of the application will have the opportunity to speak, those who are in opposition will have the opportunity to speak. After that, there is an opportunity for the applicant to make a rebuttal statement. We'll close the public hearing. This is after any questions or discussions that the commissioners have of the applicant. And then we'll have a motion, a second, and a vote. So I will begin the first public hearing, and it is the application. Shannon Boykin, special use permit for commercial kennel, forty, on five acres of land, about forty-one, land district twenty-one, about zero sixty-nine, across zero zero six, A zero zero one, property located at three eighty-four, Aaron Wheaton, Brooklyn Hamilton, in zone A one, agriculture. She's asking for a special use permit, which is required to have commercial kennel. Uh, thank you. Is there anything you'd like to tell us about what you plan to do?
Um, I have three kennels, they're eight by ten, and one I just brought in a few dogs, along with my training facility.
How many have you?
Um, no more than ten. Um, the kennels can hold three apiece, and the little dog, of course, will stay in the house.
Okay, and then? We need your guidance and your advice also, and so I'm asking for both of you to...
I'm Jamie Boykin, I'm a resident.
I'm sorry, I forgot that. Anyone have any questions on this application?
What, you mentioned training, what type of training?
I have a special use already for a training, but it will not, it's a totally separate facility.
No count.
It would be a training.
Safe, safe, lay out, that, that's... So no count of...
No, no, no. Sports on.
Anyone else have any questions? Is there a motion?
Neither.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We have to have the, um, anyone that is in favor of this application, which is big. Anyone who's opposed? Anybody, nobody has any questions? Right. Plus the public hearing, and time of motion?
Motion we approve this application.
Would you be limited on the number of dollars?
I would say, yeah, no more than ten, and I'm going by what she says off. I would say I make a motion to approve this with a limit of no more than ten dollars. If I could breathe, it would just be great.
Okay. All in favor? Motion cares. So, special use of screens.
Thank you.
All right, the next public hearing. With Donald Bowles, to reserve twenty-five point one three zero acres of land, land lots one, three, five, and one hundred and four. Land district nineteen, about zero one five, parcel two B, from A one, agriculture, forestry, to R one, single family residential. Current uses timber, opposed use is residential. Property is located on Terry Lane and Forsen, Georgia.
Good evening, my name is Donald Bowles, I reside at four oh five Kodiak Trail on Forks, which is in Harris County. I am a homeowner by trade. I'm under contract to purchase this property, subject to the rezoned residential. My plans are to subdivide the twenty-five acres into twelve lots, so they could be two plus acre lots. And that's why I'm requesting for this commission.
The planning commission has recommended approval with a lot width ratio, width to length ratio of one to five, which is for every one foot of road frontage, there'd be five feet of depth in the lot. Are you okay with that?
Not to exceed.
Not, right.
Yeah.
But you're okay with that?
Yes, I'm informed.
Okay, all right, so you have no issues with that?
No, no.
Is there anyone that has any questions of this board, or yes, for those who are in favor to come over?
Uh, I believe that I read in here, correct me if I'm wrong, you're not gonna have any additional streets.
That's correct, so use existing frontage.
So you're gonna use existing frontage, and therefore you don't have any, then any acres you have to devote to?
Correct. And where possible, we're gonna use dual used driveways, so we would eliminate the twelve driveways down to as few as I could possibly have, which could be as few as six driveways, depending on photography and what the surveyors want.
Who will own the driveway?
Pardon me?
Who will own the driveway?
The property owner.
They're gonna share it?
It would be a shared driveway, which is fairly common in Harris County and West County.
There are some of our two ninety, the rent run. Shared driveways.
It splits that property.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bowles. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of the application? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Why don't you come up?
Yes, sir, please. Could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, ma'am. I'm Colonel, retired regular white man, I live at fifty-one, seven, on Old River Road. My only concern is that, that when we talked earlier, that the number of lots might be reduced from twelve to nine, which would fit more into that area. And I didn't understand if that was gonna occur or not, Mr. Bowles.
Uh, no, sir, I'm requesting twelve lots.
My only concern is that it packs too many houses in on that one road, Terry Lane. Uh, I notice he's reduced the number of driveways down to six instead of originally twelve, but, uh, that puts a lot of stress on Terry Lane. And I don't know if any studies have been done or anything of that nature. I know he meets the two acre requirement, but I'm concerned that that's just stuffing a lot of homes into that area. Most of the residents in that area, and there are a lot, have larger acres, some of the smaller ones are five and six, but there are several properties that are twenty-five, thirty, and forty. I'm concerned that it takes away from what originally drew these people to that area. I've been out there thirty years now, and my concern is that with these homes being stuffed on twenty-five acres, that it'll take on a different attitude environment. And I'm worried about that, as any of y'all would be in your neighborhood. And he has told me that he's gonna build pretty expensive homes, and that alleviates some of the concern, but twelve is a little bit more than what I talked about before. You know, I thought eighty-nine would be more appropriate.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Ben Ken, four six five of Terry Lane. My family has owned and lived on the property just adjacent to the tract that Mr. Bowles is seeking to develop for almost sixty years. Not unlike a lot of other families that have moved out of Harris County. The reasoning was simple at the time when my parents first broke ground out there, is to get away from urban sprawl, to be in the country, per se. We have a way of life out there. To kind of piggyback off the prior speaker's comments, there are several large acres of land, tracts of land down Terry Lane. It's a quiet neighborhood. If you know your neighbor, probably gotta get in your car and drive to them, because it's just that type of neighborhood. So, my concerns are a little bit different in the sense that we are right adjacent to that property. My concerns, my family's concerns rather, are twofold. One, obviously, the potential for, uh, population density that was not there before, which would take away and bring the urban sprawl that we so desire to get away from in Columbus right to our back door. Secondly, my wife and I are considering building a home that's even closer to the property line out there. And although we would like to be a good neighborhood, we don't necessarily want to see it to our neighbor's backyard. I know precedent had been set in other developments in other parts of the county. I don't think it's unreasonable to request some sort of permanent tree line buffer between the properties, maybe somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy-five to a hundred feet, at least in that sense. If that did run the length of the property line, I don't necessarily know that there's twelve houses adjacent. So, I'm not necessarily saying that I'm against what Mr. Bowles is trying to do. I would be more in favor of it if there were some amendments and some guarantees. Mr. Bowles and I had a very pleasant conversation on the phone, where he was very open and honest with me about what his vision for that property was. And in that conversation, you know, he explained to me that, uh, his vision was to keep it fairly wooded. The only problem that I took away from that in our conversation was unless it's in right, once an owner buys a lot, they can do whatever they can with it, including cut down the trees. So, those are my concerns, obviously, the population density. The immediate disruption, the construction alone on twelve lots on that stretch of road right there is going to cause disruption. That's a dead end road. It goes all the way down to Mulberry Creek, so there's one way in and one way out, and you start doing construction on twelve lots, you're creating some issues. That coupled with the fact that our way of life is going to be disrupted on the property we live on, we do things that are not, that would be atypical on a subdivision on fourteen acre or so tract of land, we're riding ATB, we're shooting skeet, we're doing things that you would imagine in a rural city. So, with this right at our back door, it could create some issues and some obvious concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Ken. Anyone else in opposition? Mr. Bowles, would you like to address some of those concerns?
Uh, with regards to the previous gentleman spoke, I would suggest that trees are valuable to homeowners. People do move to Harris County for the rural environment, and I find just clear cutting a lot takes away from the value of the lot, so that's not our intention to clear cut the lots. You can't replace a fifty-year-old tree. I would also suggest that since the survey has been performed, and if he's immediately west to me, he has a pasture there, and we have a, we have a forest, we have woods, and so, um, you know, we will leave the trees along that property line, so that we're not staring into his property.
Is, there is, there is a tree line there already?
Correct.
Inside, it's wooded?
It's wooded, with hardwoods on his boundary.
Anybody have any questions?
Would you consider a permanent buffer there?
I think until we get the surveying done, lot layout's done, I don't really wanna back myself into a corner, but I'd be willing to discuss a buffer along that side. You know, I couldn't do seventy-five feet, these lots are gonna be approximately a hundred and forty-five feet wide, I could consider a thirty-foot buffer down the western boundary of my property.
Anyone else have any questions, Mr. Bowles? All right, the next hearing. Is there any more discussion? Any more discussion? Is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve, with the condition that there be on the west boundary a thirty-foot buffer.
Okay, the motion?
No second.
Okay, and a second, on the west boundary for approval, and on the west boundary, a thirty-foot buffer. Oh, excuse me.
Undisturbed?
Undisturbed.
I'm just asking.
Sure.
You need to define that.
It's undisturbed buffer, it's a thirty-foot buffer, then he just...
So we can't bode under the trees to make it a practice?
It's undisturbed.
Your warning orders defines buffer as an area of natural vegetation or man-made construction which is intended to provide a visual and divisional separation between dissimilar land uses. It defines a natural buffer as a visual screen of natural vegetation six feet in height, with a combination of existing and replanted vegetation, which can reasonably be expected to be at least six feet in height within two growing seasons, and have an opaque visual separation from one side throughout the year.
So the buffer is defined by the public hearings? The buffer is defined by the public hearings? All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion? Passes. Thank you. And the ratio was not, was not part of the... The lot ratio, there was not part of the... Okay, and the next is the public hearing. It's the application of W. A. Boyd Senior to amend three certain conditions on eleven point six point five acres of land, lot twenty-seven, land district seventeen, about zero eight five, of parcel eleven B regarding specific property uses, property located on Georgia Highway eighty-five. Property located on Georgia Highway eight five, twenty-inch road, wherever it happens, I'm seeing four, how it functioned. It's Mr. Bowles here. And I would like to table this, the planning commission tabled it to the next planning commission later. So I'd like to table this. And then we go back to the county's. Bam, there's a motion. In a second, on the floor, to proceed with option A. Okay, all in favor?
Has still got some.
Okay.
Sure. So if we go with option A, then you're going to write the grant or a more expensive option?
That's maybe what I'm asking, is that the way you want to proceed? Because I think if we get ourselves in a corner, whatever we submit, I think that's the high end of what we're going to get from GMA.
Sir, may I ask you this? Would you feel comfortable writing grant or option A? But because this is an estimated cost, increasing that four hundred thousand with grant application to six hundred thousand, which would give us, I mean, we don't really know if we do this out, but it's going to come in at three fifty or sixty.
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
We have to put in...
Is that, do you have to?
We have to provide a detailed cost estimate that they may question some of the numbers if they're arbitrarily high. Maybe we can put some cushion in there, some contingency, but I think jumping from four hundred to six hundred, because I think the four hundred probably got some cushion built into it already.
It'll be roughly a year if things were to progress before construction could be done. So if there's a year-long waiting period, literally, we add some cost for that waiting period to expect the price.
Well, that's a real tendency, and therefore, there's potential for increased cost, and we'll have some cushion built into our numbers. So we can move up some. I'll be, I'd be fearful to go too high with numbers that they would question as being overly inflated. And the other option is that we submit for option A at four hundred, four fifty-some, maybe pushing up a little higher. And if it, if we wind up having to make a change, do something different, then you have to borrow that money or pay for it out of the general fund. But that would be the, if we don't care on the high side, that would be the potential problem running around.
But either way, we're not sure of getting four hundred thousand, six hundred thousand or whatever.
There is no assurance.
So at the last meeting, you said there was only a certain amount of money based on the hurricane, roughly for every state, or every state affected, right?
Yes, sir.
So, you know, what if we put in, say, we want six hundred thousand, and they say, well, we only got four hundred thousand left?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you know.
There is the potential. And let's say there's the potential that they deny it, that they don't have the money to extend. The priority counties, the ones that were directly impacted, it kind of starts at the southwest corner and moves up to the kind of southern end, y'all are just outside of that. Those are the priority counties. They get first chance at the money, and then it goes out to the rest of the state. So...
So our chances are?
S-... According to GMA, they ever have more money than they ever have on any other hurricane, that they feel like they will have enough money to cover most, but they're telling everybody that. So I'm assuming that they're going to get influx of applications this year compared to ones in the past. So they are optimistic, but I don't know that we can be overly optimistic that the money's going to be there. It's worth submitting, but I can't tell you what the chance is of getting funded.
Anything else?
Ma'am, will we be getting a task order from you to officially begin this project?
We can.
Is that how you want to proceed? And what would the value of that task order be?
This application, I don't know that we...
Talking about just with the application? No, to move, to move forward with option A and the application.
Yes, we'll have to put together.
A task order?
But that four hundred was the, was the fee for that?
I'll be included in the four hundred. And I'll work it out. We'll have to break out a little old survey costs to be in.
Mm.
We could send it to, we could send it to you.
Let us work up the numbers and we'll send you.
Does the board want to approve that task order before they begin?
It's not going to exceed four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, is it?
That's everything, so no.
Would you be afraid to be assorted to execute? Do we, do we want to?
I think you guys make the decision.
And we don't feel like it'll be over thirty thousand.
Okay, so the task order that's coming for option A?
Would be?
Thirty thousand dollars?
Just for the study.
Just for the study?
And the survey.
Okay.
Skipping the nine circles, Don Terry returns.
So, so we'll proceed with that and we're listed.
And then it'll come back to us for a final vote?
Yep. In six days' time, once the survey's complete and the answer's known.
Okay.
That's your motion, what you just said.
Yes, sir.
And that's your second?
What he just said?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, I was going to say, is everybody all clear on this?
I'm not.
You're not? Can you restate your...
Um, okay, so I will make a motion that we proceed with option number eight, and proceed with filling out the GMA applications. And that we make a...
A task.
A task, approve the task.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand. And I think I have to go there.
And the results come back?
Yes, and the results come back, and that we...
Moving ahead for...
Right. Review those results before we begin.
All right.
You got all that, Ed?
No, I haven't. All right. All in favor of the motion? Please raise your hand. All opposed? All right, motion carries for the majority. Yes.
Quick question.
Same application, submitting costs for option three, which is the higher amount, or for
option eight?
There you go.
Just want to clarify that.
Again, if there's anything else that you need from us?
Thank you, Ed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business on the agenda. The financial statement was provided to you at the last meeting, or November of twenty-eighteen. Plant, just I have CFO here answering any questions? Is there a motion?
I made a motion that we accept the December two thousand and eighteen statement as presented.
Change your second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I'd just clarify for me, Clint, if you would, please, on the expenditure side, general fund, non-departamental, what all is included in that?
So what's listed under non-departamental, or the...
Page four in that top...
The further breakdown of the non-departement on page twenty-one?
What is?
So we could use one by one, what those are made of, the personal services, employee benefits area, HRA arrangements that are, that fall under the general fund or within here. General postage machines are in the purchase contract services, top years, property capital insurance.
So you're really putting this in post, trying to split it out for every department that could possibly be involved?
Well, the, there are several in here that, for instance, the general office supplies and copy paper. Since I've been here, I haven't had the opportunity to do a cost study, because they do as usually. This particular fiscal year, we began to keep a log of who's using, and with the plans of either amending the budget at year end or during the budget build process in twenty-twenty to have those split out. Some of these others, well, the HRA gets split out at year end, that was one that we did last year, so that one will be split out amongst the actual users. But we don't know who uses that until the year is over, we can be able to make that. The same with most of those. Now, we could, the county manager and I discussed allocating everything that we can within reason two, you know, we'd have to come up with whatever allocation rates or studies or whatever we did, you know, each of these that we did, you know, based on whatever we come up with, whether it's number of employees, square footage, areas of whatever it is. We, we've taken this from the time that I, I came on board here, and we've substantially shrunk it from where it was, and a lot of the things are allocated out. If you'll remember, group insurance, pensions, were all in here at one point in time, and not within the markets, the true causes of those departments were modified, which they're much closer now.
Any other questions? There's a motion to approve as second. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Paul. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the FY nineteen slash twenty budget schedule. This was discussed in our work session last week. Are there any questions? Any discretion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is a motion to approve? Is there a second? Second. A motion in the second? All those in favor? Please raise your hand. Motion carries. The budget schedule for what? This for the nineteen twenty is approved as was agreed upon. Next item on the, under new business on the agenda is the new bid award, striping of county roads. There were some, this is the second time that we have looked at this. We have bids that county had over budget, and, and there were some roads that were deleted. And Mike, do you have anything you need to add to this because of the, it was because of the, that roads were deleted?
That's right. It was the, we were still over, I think, about roughly eleven thousand, so we pulled out a couple of roads to make it more fit for the budget.
Three roads in the third, three out of the way. Recommendation is to award this road's aid project to bid state striping in the amount of sixty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. The project has been included in the approved budget used as lost funds for twenty-fourteen. If we were to, to stripe all thirty-three, s lost funds would have to be amended in the amount of ten thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents. So is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, but that we include the Happy Road, one point one miles in it, which would create the need for a budget amendment of a thousand twenty-three dollars. The Happy Road is in my district, and it's really well-traveled, and it needs striping badly. I didn't ride down Lower Blue or Barnes Mill to see if, in addition to those, I trust that Mike's done that. But for a thousand dollars to strip the Happy, which is one point one mile, it's right in the county line, a lot of traffic's coming through there, going to sit and talk to women in the afternoon. So I'd like to make a motion that we include the Happy Road and a budget amendment of a thousand twenty-three dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in the second. The motion is to, to approve the bid, the bid state striping in the amount of sixty-five eight fifty-two with an addition of a thousand twenty-three dollars for my Happy Road. All those in favor? Please raise your hand. All right, motion carries. All right, Mr. County Manager, you're up on the agenda.
Number seven?
Number seven. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm in the paving list, and that's mine. I was going to get it. In twenty thirteen, the board approved a paving list of ten roads. There were two from each district. They were Washington Road, which is in District One, Orange, District Two, has been completed. Holland Drive was in District Three. Tried for a year and a half or so to make that happen, and did not, we could not make it happen because of title issues. So that project in District Three, Holland Drive, has been abandoned. And I'm asking that number eight, Pitt's Drive in District Three, which was in the seventh hive on the roads, be moved up to number three where Holland Drive was. So I would like to make the motion that we move Pitt's Drive to, to number three on the paving list, which would be our next road to be paved.
Make motion.
Okay, so there's a motion in the second. All in favor? Please raise your hand. All right, thank you very much. Motion carries. Now you're on.
Madam Chairman, Board of Commissioners, the next item is item number eight, scrap tire grant. This is a very popular project among citizens. Last year, the Southwest Department conducted a tire amnesty grant where citizens can bring in their scrap tires for free to the county's transfer station to get rid of them. And all this is paid for by the State Department of Natural Resources, Environmental Protection Division. Last year was very successful. We received about twenty-seven hundred scrap tires, or about thirty-one tons, over a two Saturday day event back last April. So simply, we'd like to do it again. So I mentioned to the board to authorize the submission of a grant to the Department of Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Division to conduct another two-day, which is two Saturdays, April twenty and April twenty-seventh, to collect scrap tires from citizens at no cost to the citizens, and all costs reimbursed by the state. Last year, the cost was five thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. And you have the application in front of you, as well as a, a flyer that would communicate to the citizens exactly time, date, place, when and where, and all the rules to be adhered to. The staff recommends, the staff authorized the staff to submit this grant application.
All right. And it cost us nothing.
Zero.
Do we think there might be an advantage, the dates are Saturday, April twentieth, which is the Saturday?
Before Easter.
Before Easter. And Saturday, April twenty-seventh, at the transfer station from eight to four. So do we think there might be an advantage to move that? I don't have any idea.
We, we talked about at the staff level, nobody had any, you know, people bring the tires in all the time.
Okay.
So they might want to get, clean, do some spring cleaning before Easter.
Okay.
That was our thought process. But again, it's two Saturdays, April twenty and twenty-seventh, and we keep tracking all the tires and when they came in. And if the twentieth is not successful, maybe next year, we can amend that, that those days.
Yeah, I forgot how many we had last year.
Twenty-seven hundred tires, or about thirty-one tons, over two Saturday events. And both days were rainy, very rainy and cold, and that might have not brought people... And that might have, um, not bring people to bring in their tire for free.
On the flyer, it says Harris County Residence Zone. Is there a way you're checking that?
Lots of checks.
Just all of them, please? I'm just curious. I mean, that should only be Harris County Residence Zone. I just wonder how you were checking?
Just like the flyer.
Any other questions?
If we ended up with forty tons, I guess the grant, there's no top dollar amount with that.
That's right. Um, basically, we did budget the time. But the grants can easily be amended upward.
And downward.
With, namely upward. So, um, and there's always money in the scrap tire payment grant, you know, fund at the state level. I don't really see a problem, but if we, if we had just a massive amount of tires, we could amend the grant to get the full amount.
Is there a motion? All right, there's a motion.
I'll say.
All right, a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And once motion cares, Saturday, April twentieth and Saturday, April twenty-seventh.
It will look on all the commissioners there to, to accept tires.
All right, next up, the county managers. The items is the nine-one-one radio system.
Madam Chairman, Board Commissioners, the county has a great nine-one-one system. The nine-one-one system, in my opinion, consists of three parts. The cat system, computer and dispatcher, the, the telephone system and the radio system. Last year, we did put in a brand new cat system and a brand new telephone system, nine-one-one. And connected to the hospital internet that Diverse Power owns and has available to us. So that was done. Now, the last piece of the pod is the radio portion of the nine-one-one system. Plus, Harris County is unique, very unique when it comes to nine-one-one. Harris County's public safety radio system is part of the CETRA radio system that's owned by Diverse Power. And that's a utility company. It's a electrical, electrical membership corporation, NMC of the state. So we share our radio, Diverse Power owns the radio system that we use as our nine-one-one system. It's a great partnership. It's very cost effective. We just don't have an agreement between us and Diverse Power to use their system. So for just good housekeeping doc, just out of good housekeeping document, we've been working on a sharing agreement between the county and Diverse Power to use their CETRA radio system for our nine-one-one system. It's been a great partnership for many years and the partnership works. Also, and that's a sharing agreement. That's all. It's housekeeping, it's a sharing agreement. Item number B, the county uses a lot of Diverse Power's radio frequencies for our frequencies. And we have our own frequencies, but we use them with Diverse Power. And the FCC is requesting through Diverse Power that we approve the Diverse Power frequency agreement. The next item is Dean Gens, Dean Steway, frequency agreement. We own some frequencies. Dean owns some frequencies that we use for the nine-one-one purposes. And, and, and we need to approve that agreement to share in those radio frequencies. And then the last document is housekeeping documents between the county and Dean's two way for Dean to maintain our nine-one-one radio equipment and all the other equipment consoles within the nine-one-one center. Dean, Dean's two way has been doing this for many years, very, very great service. We just need an agreement, just a housekeeping agreement to make sure, um, you know, just a good agreement. To, since they've been doing all the work in, in, in the past years. And basically, a series of next steps. With us today, we have Dean Gens, Dean Steway, Randy Shepherd, CEO of Diverse Power. And everybody knows Monty, everybody knows Jamie, Alex, and we have Dean, Dennis Ward from TUSA Consulting, who helped us to get to where we are today by helping us get a cat system in and a nine-one-one telephone system in. And he can, Dennis can talk about a little bit about our next steps on how to improve our radio coverage area with, in conjunction with Dennis, uh, with Randy Shepherd of Diverse Power and Dean Gens. So that's about it. I like the way these gentlemen's all come up. Uh, this is a very complicated, um, project. It's coming to a conclusion. We've been working on this for about a year. And I'd like to, uh, talk, after we've talked about all the housekeeping documents, talk about our next steps. So we can prepare our next steps to get better radio coverage than all the public safety folks are wanting. So how do we proceed?
All right.
Well, I'm Dean Gens. I have Randy Shepherd.
Dennis Ward.
I'll start. I'm gonna try to give you an overview because I assume we got a couple of, uh, new members to the board that may not have been briefed to the information in early infancy stages. The CETRA network is owned by Diverse Power. They were gracious enough to make an offer almost four years ago for Harris County to share in the larger network. We started off with, I think, twelve sites that encompassed LaGrange through Harris County for the diverse operating area. Diverse grew their operational area into South Georgia, down to Cuthbert, all the in Arlington, Georgia. So the core systems put in that give us geographical coverage within that stretch from North LaGrange down to Cuthbert, Georgia, Alabama line, and then twenty to thirty miles to the east. Since that time, starting with twelve sites, I think we're at what, fifty?
About forty-eight.
Forty-eight, fifty sites around the state of Georgia. So the growth of this network is very skilled. The core infrastructure is housed with Diverse Power, LaGrange, and a substation is redundant in Mulberry in Fort Simeon. Today, we have Flynn Energies out of Warner Robins, Georgia, that has joined the network. They're using part of the core switch, just as Harris County is, but they have their, their use of the network. They're out there autonomous to us if that having impact. But by them adding sites from Fort Benning all the way to Warner Robins, it impacted Harris County to the eastern portion. So currently, with them onboard, the CAVI MC in metro Atlanta, up around the Brady Stadium, Snappy Shoals out of Congress, Georgia, and we have, um, two other MCs that we're looking at. As of today, with the fifty-some odd sites, we have, we have about fifty-one percent of the state of Georgia covered with mobile radios. Within the scope of a daily business, the county deputies, whoever's in the county can basically run any order in the network. Their radio squares in downtown Atlanta, talking back to our dispatchers here, dispatchers in the CAD, send on GPS, we know where they're at. So it's a very unique, I, I count myself as a very unique position because there's not many counties that have that kind of resources. Typically very geographical, within the four corners of your county. So having said that, within the county, we've got a lot of train. It was built for mobile coverage in the infancy stages with those first twelve sites. We told the commission there was going to be a day when we need to make a decision as to where you want to expand for portable coverage. As it is today, within the county, you've made a couple of additions to the network from day one. You had a GO rock, which addressed a, a geographical area on the west side of the county. And a site in, uh, Waverly Hall, obviously give more portable coverage in there. So as it is today, you have a hundred percent coverage with mobiles anywhere in the county. With the portals, you're going to find areas in low valleys and so forth, just because of the train. That is up to you guys to come back and tell us how you want to move forward to the point you're comfortable. The commission asked me basically what was my thoughts of where we might need to be. And I came back with between four to five additional sites. The, the quadrants of the county that need enhanced portable coverage, if you truly want them to get out and be on portable radio, would be in the southern district, it's Catalas, and we're in the Coca-Cola, other West Bonneville area. We have rolling hills, uh, on the eldersly side, out around McKeer Road down to the Steel Creek subdivision that border into the lower side of the county. In the northern part of the county, we're talking the valley area from Oak Mountain. You have a ridge that runs through the middle of the county, Oak Mountain. So we would suggest in that general area. And then on the opposite side of the county, out around Harrisville Road. If you'll remember, we did put a temporary site up there with Diverse Power and we had great coverage. But more impact at the time was GO block because of the population and stuff. So we would recommend something at that site when the county owns the Comactor site and it has a fire station. So those are the four areas that I would identify to look at and budgetize. The fifth site would probably be a floater site that could be used somewhere around exit twenty-five here. You have a combination of one sixteen that sits down low, you have a road that runs behind one ridge. And the interstate is in the valley area that runs through, so from the traffic environment, that area works. So budgetary wise, we'll come back to Randy with some budgetary numbers. Having said that, there are some items that need to be addressed moving forward to enhance and make more robust nine-one-one centers such as a server, another position. There are, again, things that we, on the early stages, were not budgetized. But we're at a point now where we need to move forward based on needs. Uh, so we would like to make that more sustainable in an event where we've got an outage, uh, be it with fire or what have you. That would make the nine-one-one system, if you're done, on the sun. So there again, we're bringing the budgetary numbers back to Randy and work forward. So where we're at, it's, it's more of a budgeting issue for you guys. What roadmap you want to be on to enhance it. In the short term, we can educate the users. It's out there. Some features it's in the radio inherently. It's called a gateway repeater. It basically takes the mobile radio and it extends the range to the portable. So if they get into an injured building right now, if they don't have portable coverage, they can activate it. Activate their radio when they're talking back to it. So now they've increased their range into a base, into a house. That's some issues that we're, we're working with Randy on to educate the users. But as I said, it's, it's really coming up with a game plan of how you want to enhance it and where you want to go. That's going to tell us some tower site locations. Once we sort of come up with a, a site that, that meets the criteria, we're going to run the studies and we'll get out of it. And that's what facilitates of what you can get for coverage. And then there again, it's a matter of how we can work together to get a site in the location, get the county on it. And whether you want to do it all in one budget here, if you want to do it over course, you know, that's, that's basically where we're at. Unless you've got any other questions, I think that's similar to the summary I've brought to you.
How soon will you have the budgets for the sites that you've talked about?
We're close, ma'am.
Is this a budget cycle? I mean, we've had an information.
Absolutely, absolutely. Within the next few weeks, we can handle this on too. There's some variables in there. Land acquisition, if the county's going to go ahead with a site, they will build. Or is it a site that could be a co-located for an existing tower? Is it a site that makes business sense for myself to look at and build? We, we just need to look at all avenues, but we can give you the sort of worst case scenario based on what five sites would be with the opportunity, if you partnered or didn't have to build something, then that number's great. But we would come to you with a harder number, uh, with variable being a landing position.
And that's in county cost.
Sure, sure. You've got, you've got a core cost of what the infrastructure for a site is going to cost. Then the variable is, do you have to build a tower for it to go on or do you go on one that's existing, you know, paying a rent or you?
Dean, you can say, what's, what's an average cost for a tower? I know years ago, when I first became a commissioner, my county daddy, when we were talking about the radios and the fronts we had, I think the cost was about twenty-five thousand.
Unfortunately, inflation's hit.
That's what I feel. That's been out years ago. That's been eight years ago.
There, Dean, there's a large criteria we have to meet when we go into public safety. All of the sites, and that's part of the redundancy that this system gives the county, it's very robust. We build it to the industry standards, just like the cell site is built. So we, we, we're not throwing these small tower up that could be blown over the first time a rail storm comes into. Based on that, a typical site could range you anywhere from a hundred thousand to five hundred thousand. If, if there's a large game, I think we're in the medium of a hundred and fifty to two fifty is sort of the average. But if you're on a hilltop, you've got a shorter tower, then your variable goes down drastically. So it's a, it's an open-ended question right there, basically.
So one of the things that we want to recommend to the county to explore is one of the next steps is to do an assessment and a study so we can evaluate, you know, each of those sites and not only tell you what that coverage is going to look like for each one of those sites, but also give you budgetary numbers, um, that we can specifically target and tell you what it's going to cost to put a particular site here, what it's going to cost for the, you know, for the redundancy and all those things that we have, we need to make it a public safety site. And so that's sort of one of the things that needs to take place, you know, to make sure that, you know, you guys aren't just throwing money out, just building random sites throughout the county. We want to make sure that there's a methodology that's actually going to support the first responder community.
Any idea, and I always ask this question, Monty, any idea on what a study might have cost? I don't have a hunch to it because I know that that's something you'd have to work up the cost estimate. I, I am curious as to what you think it might cost.
I'll give you a range. I don't know if Nick has shared anything with you. There's a gentleman missing beside me. His plane got caught up in weather, so he's not here yet. So, but the typical range can be anywhere from thirty-five to sixty thousand. It, it depends. And we need to sit down with Randy and, uh, put together something that, uh, makes sense for Harris County. Because you guys don't have unlimited funds, so we need to do something that is.
Plus, plus I think what the synergy here in the room is, TUSA, as our consultant for nine-one-one purposes, can work with Dean and Diverse Power and share information, share resources and determine where we need to stick, or stick the, uh, install the next sites, um, that's good for nine-one-one. And hopefully it's good for Dean and Diverse. And if so, we can share in resources and cost. Because we can use it for nine-one-one purposes, Dean can use it for his commercial purposes and Diverse Power can use it for their diverse power purposes. In a perfect world, we could all share resources and go together on these new towers.
And I agree. What I would tell you here is from where we're at, I think we've got resources around the table that we can look at. We obviously know where the cover dishes are and TUSA can run studies and stuff. But what we bring to the table is our manufacturer has the software that they're willing to work with us in very nominal fee, if, if anything, to run a justification study for. So that's something we can share with TUSA. To keep the cost down, if they don't have to go recreate the wheel, we've got the studies for every, all fifty-one sites around the state. We know where the coverage is. When we're talking back to portable, it's not, these are filling some. So we can give the model to them. They can look at it, give their view on it, analyze it if they would like and so forth. So resources can be shared. Probably the goal is to try to work together, keep the cost down for the county. So we want to utilize the tools within-house to get you resources that can keep the cost down. As I said, we, we pretty well know the county, uh, from geographical area. We know where the deficiencies are when it comes to portals. And there again, we've got a hundred percent coverage with mobiles. That's not an issue. It's just handles. What position do you want to get in from the county to get extra coverage for portals? So having said that, I think we've got to the resource aspect, it makes this business sense for Diverse. Currently, they don't have a need for extension in the county. They're basically mobile coverage customers. So it really comes back to what you guys want to do. But if there's an opportunity that any of us can participate in, we're open. Our goal is to get public safety communications to where you want it to be. And enhance the opportunity for wireless carriers to come in. We're, we're struggling to broaden across the county. Wireless, you know, there's so many areas that big carriers are not going to be getting into for a long time. So anytime we facilitate a site, we're going to be looking at billion, not only for your needs or our needs, but what other carriers we can try to promote to the county. And obviously, sites are needed when it comes to need for broadband, whether it be a dedicated carrier or a commercial cellular carrier. So we want to look at all the next steps.
Let me just add one thing to that from our form of view. While we may not need an additional tower for coverage, we're in this with you guys and our other partners. For the bomb hall. And so there may be a situation where the county finds a tower to get on. Dean constructs a tower, the county's constructs a tower. We may, we may connect it to the network we're finding. We may do something else to help out. We're certainly going to help everywhere we can. This has been a great deal, I think, for us. I hope it's been a great deal for you guys. We've both got things out of this that we couldn't have done, I don't think separately. For instance, the fiber running up through Hamilton, one of the Malibu Center, those kinds of things. That was a joint venture on the two. That was a joint venture on the two, our part and the county's part. So, we're, we're open to do anything we can do that, that makes sense to help this partnership continue to grow it. We really saw the benefits of this during Hurricane Michael, when we had Mutual Aid coming in from these other places to help us in South Georgia. And it greatly cut down on the restoration times and so forth, and this network is about to go statewide. We've got our statewide over, unless we're going to build out the rest of it. So, before it's over with, Harris, Harris County may be a transport, whether it's transporting prisoners or any other type of work they're doing that takes you out of Harris County. Very soon, you'll all be able to talk to all of the state of Georgia. And there have not been counties in Georgia that have consolidated things like that.
Dean, let me ask you a question. Once you're thinking on the coverage now as to where we were five years ago before we did that, or just?
We're at this now, but we're ready at where we were five years ago. And as I said, the very unique thing with this is, if you add a site, you know immediately what your outcome is because you're able to gauge the coverage. We, we can actually take a handy radio, and there again, this is part of the TETRA network, it's so advanced. It has feature sets with signal readings. We can drive around and take the signal strength basically within our grids and stuff, so we know where the deficiencies are or not. There again, sharing data back and forth, whether you consult a site to us, we know basically where, where it's at. To answer your question, we've got so much more coverage now for portals as it is today, even though we still got a few deficiencies out there.
Your coverage has improved, but it's still not where it needs to be for the public safety standard. And so, we want to try to get you closer to that. The big thing is in building coverage, that's where, you know, the system that's been built out is for mobile only use. But police officers, firemen, they're using portable radios, they're using portals when they get out of their vehicles, they're using it when they're going into structures. So, we need to enhance that system to be able to support their communications when they go into a building, when they go into a burning building, or when they're going and, you know, serve someone or something. There needs to be, you know, reliable communication. So, we need to look at improving that to that public safety standard, which is ninety-five percent portable and building coverage. So, we want to slowly try to get you there. And we want to put together a plan that shows you, if you put a site here where you have population, this is where it's going to really help first responders. So, that way, you have this information, you can sit there and look at it and say, okay, we have money to do this and this, and you can make then an informed decision.
Do you think it's possible to get that ninety-five percent saved? Consider, no?
You've got, you've got a big challenge.
I don't think so, it causes a problem.